Call of the meeting order.
Mayor Waterman.
Present.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Hinkelman. Trustee Krugman.
Present.
Trustee Valier.
Yes.
Trustee Comodina is absent, and Trustee Boggs is absent. The clerk is here, and Attorney Graham Lee is here, and we do have a call.
United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, on your nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
We're staying on the agenda as minutes from last one.
Do you want to switch two and four here? Kind of got the horse before the cart.
You want to put it to me? Any else that can for you? As always, Sean, you do a great job.
I'll make a motion as presented, including the... Hold a second.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Close?
Motion's carried.
That's good point.
Actually, Mayor, if I would just...
This has been tabled, anyway, somebody's got to bring it off the table before we can act.
If you guys don't mind, I would like to take number two and take it to the bottom of the agenda. For several reasons.
Makes sense to me.
I would like to be able to clear it at the end of the meeting, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Right now, the past few weeks, I've just been doing this as a volunteer. You don't have treasurer for the Korean Financial Report on here, so I would like to go through the financial report and everything, but I would... With your blessing, I would like to make the motion that we take number two and put it at the end of the business.
It's included three with that.
Sure, we can do that. Two and three? Yeah, I can close it.
And this will be great. I have another report, other than that. You were going to write up a couple of orders that were said you...
I was.
Look! Look!
Establishing weight limits for Main Street?
Oh, that's... I guess all I can say is I have them for you next time. It's all right. No. Weight limits and that was something else.
They were going to get together and discuss tweaks to a building permit where they...
So, yeah, weight limits are... It's on what street is that?
Main Street.
Main Street. And what was the limit we're going to put on? Thirty? Put a ten ton. I mean, if... That excludes farmers, so... And if somebody's doing something, they can come and get a... Somebody... We're mainly trying to do is stop the... I think there's a... Heavy truck. I think there's a state law that if somebody would come in with a moving van into it, that they're allowed to come in.
What about the metro?
Well, you know, laws are getting worked on down here. If it's destroying a road, I think you can ask them to take a different route.
Nice looking to stop consistent.
Right. Okay. I apologize.
We'll move on to four. Terran Comodina. Mike. Were you able to get in touch with her this week?
I have not. I have not talked to Terran, no. I have not.
Have you tried and just canceled?
I honestly, I've played like great, Dad. I... Somebody did not. Somebody forgot to get all the rum, and didn't.
The biggest problem with her absenteeism is that sometimes we have trouble making quorum.
Sure.
Or quorums. I'm sorry, quorum.
Sure.
That was good. Make your quorum.
Sure.
And with somebody that's always absent, it makes it even tougher.
Have we had any communication from her whatsoever?
In that sense, she sent me a text asking for all of her backdated checks.
And that was how many months ago? And has she been... And she's been to one meeting in 2014?
Maybe it was August, September, that she asked for information. She hasn't been to a meeting since April, I think.
Sean, I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you back.
Can't hear you back.
April? She wasn't in a meeting since April, I think. I think. I'd have to check on it. But we haven't heard from... I haven't heard from her since August or September.
The reason for the urgency is here. The People's Party Caucus is December first? Sean?
Yes.
December first.
Sure.
If she's going to be running absent for two more years, then you can't put her on the ballot. If she's going to be here, she can be here. Just let us know she's going to be here.
Sure.
If not, we want her resignation so we can get that position on the ballot.
Sure.
I mean, it's as simple as that.
Yeah, no, then what I would...
We're not asking for much.
No, what I'll do is get a hold of her. You know, I will get a hold of her, then I'll call you, or I'll have her call you.
That would be nice, because I don't have any way to get... Well, I have no number for her or anything.
Yeah, no, if that'll work for you, I will get a hold of her and have her get a hold of you.
The caucus is the third. Caucus is next, and it's the board meeting.
Yeah, caucus comes before the board meeting.
Well, it's simpler than that. It's as simple as declaring her seat vacant for abandonment of her position. Ambush and also if she doesn't meet the residency requirements, and she has not met our residency requirements since July of 2013. We have no way to communicate with her. She doesn't communicate with us. We don't have any phone numbers. We have no address. She doesn't come to meetings. She knows when they are. She doesn't live in our community for July, August, September, November. For seventeen months, she hasn't lived in our community.
I totally agree with you. Gray advised us not to.
I do.
But at the same token, what do you have a few?
Okay, I mean, we can go through the motions. Here's my problem. Because when this problem came up before, I contacted the municipality, and I started talking to them. And what they've told me is that there's a recent court decision that says that an elected official has a property right in the office that they hold. Someone, under maybe a circumstance like... I don't know the full circumstance, I didn't mean the case, but I do know that there were damages on it or whatever. I mean, I assume that what went about about it, we're talking 25 bucks or whatever it is she just paid. But she isn't here, and I understand your frustration.
We're talking about the frustration of getting these votes during having quorums, just like we... We scheduled a special meeting. A lot of us work second shift jobs and take off at night to come here. And then we don't have a quorum where you get to go back home and very...
You're not hearing me argue with you. I think that the responsible thing for her to do, if she doesn't want to play, is resign. What I'm going to ask you to do, rather than moving on tonight, is double-check what I just told you. Then if you decide you want to go through with the full-blown hearing and everything else to remove her from office, we can do that.
And we could set up something for a special meeting if we can hear from her. One way or the other. I mean, if she plans on coming back, that's fine, too.
Sure.
That's absolutely fine, too. But if she's not, if she does not plan to attend another meeting for two more years, her name needs to go back on the ballot.
And I agree with you. Let me contact her, have her get a hold of you, and see what we can do and...
See if we can get it done within the next...
You know, we can schedule a special meeting on a Saturday morning and have her come in and, you know, stay her position. Let us know what she wants to do.
Sure.
You know?
Obviously, we cannot speak for her.
I'll look up what I was saying, but it's a slipper slope.
We can do what's correct for the village.
I 100% agree with you. I mean, the woman should either...
Quit or do the job.
Yep, okay. Should we table that until we...
Well, I guess we're not... I guess we've just decided we're not going to make a move on it at this time, right?
I will make a report. All of these I can.
Ray's going to... Yeah.
All of it I can, except what our options are.
Well, I understand the urgency that you're feeling is, if she gets our resignation now, we could have somebody through the caucus who's independent vie for that seat as a two-year position. Otherwise, it's going to just sit open for two more years, creating a vacancy and the quorum issues that we have.
It's not good for the village.
Unfortunately, the quorum, the caucus comes ahead of our next board meeting, so we'd have to try to do something between...
Well, hopefully, he'll get a hold of her, and she tells you not going to do it, then we'll...
I'm not going to know where you're heading with your dad's next time, so she's got to say, "I don't know what to do."
Because if she's willing to resign, then the question's moot, but if she's not, I'll bring back... I will bring back an answer. That I... At least, you guys can judge for.
Sounds logical.
Moving on. All right, anybody have anything on number five? Anything we want to talk about?
Let's see, we got some salt spreaders prices.
Quotes on salt spreaders.
What would you recommend, Steve?
I'm favoring towards the 1300. The TGSO. They're all pretty much the same as far as motors. You're gonna... You know, you go to the bottom pages there, it's just a bigger hopper. The one thing that you have to remember is you cannot leave salt in these for more than 24 hours. And if it freezes in there, that's too long. I mean, when you put salt in the spreader, we've got to run it empty.
So, we're looking at just buying bags of it, so we just like one bag at a time, and if, you know, nothing else, we just spread that bag out just to be done.
We can go to Farm and Flea near Camp Feenby by a pallet. Have it shrink wrapped. And set it in the truck.
Okay, and then we got to wait in the truck.
Before we put the spreader on, I would pretty much bet the one pallet would give us, depending on our weather. Last year, a pallet would have got...
Well, and even if it is, I mean, we can always go and...
Yeah, you can throw more bags in.
Throw bags in the back of it, whatever, so... Is this fairly simple? Goes into like a research deal, or is it actually...
Yeah, it needs to be... The price, which I'm sorry, I didn't give it to you. It'll be 280 bucks to have it installed. Eighty of that is freight to have it shipped in. We won't have any tax, and it'll be 200 bucks to install it.
So, it's worth 15A when that's installed?
Well, it looks to me like this hopper has enough paper to it that would even work with the salt that we filled up.
Well, the problem is, if you get a chunk, you're plugged up. Or you're going to break your spinner if you start putting chunks of salt through there. These are not, you know, commercial spreaders that, like you're going to...
When you start buying back your salt, it starts getting real stinky.
Yep.
Is there a yearly or bi-yearly service that's normally done, the snowplows? The blades and the... Is there anything that they do? Because I... When the temperature got really cold last year, I was getting a valve stick in the pile truck. And I don't know if that's something that's maintenance-related or where.
I would guess that oil's never been changed in that pump.
I did buy oil for it, but I didn't get it in there before the end of the year, so...
That's something. If you guys want to get a solder, he would service the plow. I don't know what it would cost. I don't think it'd be a whole lot, but the oil price should be dropped out of that pump.
I have plans to put it on the truck in the next few days, and if you can tell me when he's going to need it to put that on there, I'll make sure it's on there.
Well, I don't know if anybody wants one, or we want to hire it done again, however you want it.
Well, I mean, the expense of having it hired done, I mean, it'll pay for itself as long as we can maintain it, which it sounds like it's going to come down to. Let's just make sure we don't heat salt in it and, you know, get it back off and get it cleaned out and all that.
Take care of it and last...
He's going to need help, you know? Things along those lines. In that same vein, we need maintenance done on the truck itself.
Big time, right.
So, I'm going to suggest here, in kind of a blanket-type scenario, that, I mean, I don't know what kind of cap we want to put on it, but if we need maintenance work done on the plow itself, we need maintenance work done on the truck.
The brakes need to...
Well, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but, you know, to get the whole package done here, are we going to be going through the same outfit for the spread?
Last time we went to Firestone, this Jim Mortier up here.
I'm interested in a one-stop-shop type scenario, so we don't have to chase around constantly and...
He would do it. I don't know what it would cost, but the brakes have to be done. The snowplow kind of helped stop the truck from going through the garage after Halloween. They are locking up.
I'm just thinking out loud here, but I mean, we're looking at possibly as much as with the spreader on the back, but maybe spending upwards of $3,000, great.
Where are these prices from?
Jim Mortier. That up here on Route 6, we have a road. Chair repair.
All right, cross. Got all the farm equipment up there, okay? He used to work with his brother now, so...
Okay, so the question is, too bad or not too bad?
I just think in the end, you know, we try and have this hired done, it's going to be expensive that way also, so in the end, we're going to end up spending the money no matter what.
We paid 500 bucks for two weeks worth of selling.
Right, and, you know, it's... Who knows? Bits and pieces from other people, and it's supposed to be a lot of them, because of the winter, so... You know, a lot of it comes down to, you know, we saw, you know, every time, or just, you know, when it looks like it needs it, and that's what, you know, relying on you guys to...
Whether you want to do the streets or just the intersections where you need to slow down.
Well, I think, you know, just the intersections is probably all we really need to do, but then again, if it gets bad, you need to pay attention to it.
Last year, we really only needed it that one.
One time.
One time, but we really needed it.
Well, it's just extra a week for the back of the truck, man, too. I'm sure that helps, but I don't know.
Well, I saw it about four times about here. Because the salt wasn't costing us dearly.
Yeah.
And when you buy a truckload of salt for $90, and you get like two spreadings each truckload.
You're probably going to bag salt being a $4, $5 a bag, as if you get a deal on it.
Yeah, and you're going to be going through... Going salt in just the intersections, going to go through 20 bags.
I'm just trying to, I guess, wrap my head around what kind of maximum number we want to give for something like this.
The truck needs brakes before it does anything, yeah.
And he does... He works on that, too?
He'll do it.
It's a little cold, so I'm thinking, you know, let's keep the money around here. If we do something like that, we got problems. He's right there, and then we can, you know, kind of get it.
Two o'clock in the morning, if we break down, we can drive up there and he'll come out and fix it.
Do we need something this big, or is it just more about the hopper?
They're pretty standard. It's more about the hopper. Your capacity of the salt you can haul, but there again, you know, you're only going to want to... Just if you're just doing intersections, you know, half dozen bags is going to do the intersections pretty good. We don't need these big spreaders with the backup on them and, you know...
So, what is the difference between the $980 ones and the $1,300 ones? Is it just the size of the hopper?
Yeah, and a little better frame.
A little heavier frame.
He's setting their one.
Gotcha.
Would work.
Well, the other side of it is... We got... You can have controls with the $1,300. I'm sure volunteers would appreciate that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Look bigger than that.
Well, we better start... We need to do something, because we're going to get snow next week.
Well, and I'm just going to tell this out, if we...
We do cover next week.
If we go for like a 4,000 maximum, we ought to be able to get something, you know?
Well, I know one...
Not to exceed 4,000 or whatever, or something along those lines.
It's the rear brakes that are hanging up.
And that, you know, drums are, you know, we've got to go through and replace the drums.
I'm sure he does. I mean, it's locking up and putting your head through the lens.
His dad's is...
I'll make a motion that we get the truck fixed, get the spreader on it. With the installation, I'd take some 4,000 with the... With the outfitting.
More chair repair.
More chair repair.
You have to get a roll call. Excuse me?
Yeah.
Why do you guys are still on the truck? There's a... The step on the left side, run it off. If Mr. Mortier has just a utility-type thing he could bolt to the frame so someone of shorter stature could get into the truck without doing this.
That would be a step that I don't really have to do to take the dump.
And we're going to have him service the plow. I think I cut an edge still good on that, didn't I?
We ran the skids bells for years on it, and it didn't take much wear at all. The only time we ran it without the skids was about half the last year, so it's all good shit.
And brakes, got the service plow brakes and...
Spur installation. Spur plus installation.
Right.
Did you put the step on there, Steve?
He might have something over there. We can use...
I think if I get Brian to whip something up, too, if he needed some...
I don't know what running boards cost.
Don't give me anything left to board, too.
What's that?
If there's anything left to board, too.
Right.
Okay, so we're ready for roll call on that, not to exceed 4,000 for maintenance on the truck, the brakes and plow service, and then 1,300 for the spreader plus the installation at 280, right? Trustee Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Hinkelman?
Yes.
Trustee Krugman?
Yes.
Trustee Valier?
Yes.
And the motion's carried.
Any else in your old business? Anything we want to discuss tonight?
Well, Dan's here. We can talk about that building permit ordinance scenario, but we'll get something squared away with him when we get back. Put some teeth into it somewhere.
We want to do a tax.
So what we've got here in front of us is what we approved last year.
Right.
And no one's anticipating major changes to... You're not upping your fees, are you, Gray? You're not upping your fees, are you? Do we have enough in the police fund to actually cover it? Or was it actually... Did we do that last year where we had more because of...
We had enough last year.
C to I M L. Contribution here is... Where would that fall under?
It would fall under contributions, or...
No, it's going to be some type of association dues, fees, whatever. It's part of a tax or it's insurance.
Insurance right here, 35,000, maybe, for a fee.
Okay.
We got 15 dollar vouchers, are we cheap? I don't have the top people have appropriations.
Well, that's what this is right here. This is appropriation order.
This was last year.
Right.
We've changed some of the numbers.
I just wondered if we...
For the same amount of money, we could change the numbers around that way.
Right.
For the appropriations?
Yeah. Yes, but all stays the same. Same amount.
Well, the appropriations didn't, and... The appropriations get what? Because we were allowing money for the backhoe or something like that?
Yeah.
So, something will change if, you know, if they decide we're not going to backhoe, they should push it down, but that doesn't mean it's going to.
Worst-case scenario, it's not that difficult for us to amend this, is it, Gray?
Huh?
Is it difficult for us to amend? Is it difficult for us to amend this once we've done this?
The levy, what they use to, to tax on, if, uh, once it's in.
Oh, okay, so this is the levy, not the appropriations, okay, all right, all right, I got you, then. Yeah, we're looking at something totally different. This is the appropriation, not the levy.
We have to change our taxes like you.
This is where...
We have to change.
The money is taxed on.
Probably good this way it is.
That's right.
It's gonna be a festival taxes for this this year, and this is what we say that we don't have.
I think that's the bottom of the last two years, second two of the year, if you're telling me? That's right, double any such.
Right.
Well, this is the one you don't want to...
There's a whole one.
Yeah. Well, I see no reason to erase anything after, I mean...
I don't either.
We're talking about having to collect more from the road.
Same as last year, then?
Yep.
We can have a form of motion there?
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion that we leave the tax levy as it stood last year. Same as mine.
Second it?
I second it.
What do you mean, that's why you need to ask, or you're...
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I gotta, gotta get my roll call. Um, but, I mean, if we're, I'm gonna draw it up. So, we can do it now, and then we'll just sign it next month, and that would be just signed, so, um...
That'll be for work.
All right, so.
And it's not due till next month, right?
The third Tuesday in December. Mm-hmm. Uh, Trustee Hinkleman?
Yes.
Trustee Krugman?
Yes.
Trustee Valier?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Waterman?
Yes.
And the motion is carried.
All right.
Just, when you go any further, this showed up here, I don't see it on here, but it looks like we need to make a...
Yeah.
Uh, insurance payment by the nineteenth of December, so rather than hold off, I mean, I've looked into this before and passed, going through other agencies, and nobody wants to question me this, so... We're kinda rocking a hard place on this one.
It's not really an option if they're into...
No, it's...
The only option is, do we wanna pay it one payment, do we wanna pay it in two payments, and it makes no sense to make, makes no sense to pay it, to pay it more than one people.
We're, uh...
Have to pay it up.
We're saving like eighty, eight dollars.
It's due in like two weeks, isn't it?
Well...
It's due.
Due in a month.
December. Yeah, I'm sorry, that was supposed to actually be included with the financial report, it came in the files, but since everything got shuffled around it.
Yeah.
It's under, this is actually, this is actually their three A, we, uh, we have nothing, so it's three A, we put two, three at the bottom.
All right, then, all right, we'll deal with it then.
So we're doing a tax levy? Mm-hmm. Please. Number seven caucus.
Week first, day three.
Yep.
It's number one, the first one.
People party caucus. I would say after the last fiasco, if we avoid having a caucus, anybody wants to run, just run independent. After the last caucus where we had to have the police and... If anybody wants to run for something, just run like we all did.
Community decided it only takes about ten signatures.
Right.
Seven.
Seven.
I think it's seven. Isn't it? Is it seven?
It's ten.
It is ten now?
Yeah, we had to go turn it out, I'm not sure. It goes by how many people turned out at the last, pre-dissolution.
Right, so it's on that.
Somebody can get ten signatures on a petition.
Right.
Is there a headline for that?
Or what?
No.
For the...
Well, for the petitions, yeah, I think you have to have it turned in by end of the year, don't you?
December fifteenth through the twenty-second for your independent candidate petition. December fifteenth through the twenty-second.
What do we have coming up for positions?
Well, yeah.
Well. It's kinda early to tell all that, that's why.
Oh, okay.
Good, you had Comodina, okay. If Shuri resigns to take the treasury job, you'd have heard.
Three trustee positions. There's definitely three trustee seats, Brian, DeLeo, Molly, and Leo.
Shuri had that.
These three seats, these three trustee seats, definitely need someone to fill them. Plus, plus...
I don't know why we have to have a caucus, because... Just run independent and save a lot of heartache.
Technically, we don't have to perform a caucus.
No, there's very few towns or villages that still do.
That makes me a little bit angry.
Well, I'll make a motion that we don't have a caucus, and anybody that wants to run for a seat, run independent and get on the ballot.
I'll send that one.
All any favors?
All right.
Anybody opposed to that? Anybody in the gallery opposed to it?
Support for what state, then?
All right, still a caucus this year, though.
Yes. The motion is carried.
Place from the gallery.
Number A, they've already talked about, direct to get that close on that next time.
They're corporate. They're corporate.
Yeah, okay, brings us to number nine.
Brings us to number nine. No, you didn't. Mr. Mayor, I keep hearing that you're gonna resign.
I keep hearing you want me to resign.
Well, after that comment you made a couple months ago, I think you should.
Well, I think you should myself also, but, you know, that's between me and you.
I mean, you've already sat there and said that you don't want to be the mayor.
Right.
So...
And I made the recommendation for somebody to take my place. I recommend Brian David.
You can do that. Are you gonna resign?
I've got it right here. Yes, it's been a...
I didn't know you were doing that. I didn't know you were doing that.
I thought you two were just gonna kick sand back and forth a little bit again tonight, because we're all gonna go home. Not so much, huh?
Do we have a copy of that?
I can make everyone copies. Perhaps you'd like to tell us what you're in, or help you with what you're...
Wait, wait, here you go.
Can you read it?
Do you want me to read it in your light?
Yeah, please.
Okay. To the Village of Cleveland and Board of Trustees, I, Richard Waterman, do hereby submit this formal notification of my resignation from the office of the Mayor of the Village of Cleveland. My resignation is to be effective no later than sixty days from the date of submission on this notice. I feel that due to my present personal circumstances outside of this office, it is no longer possible for me to lead this council effectively. I am submitting this resignation at a time where this will allow for an acting mayor to be temporarily appointed by the Board of Trustees until one can be elected at the April seventh, twenty fifteen consolidated election. Please accept this letter as formal notification effective sixty days from the date on this notice, November sixth, twenty fourteen. I thank the residents for providing me with the opportunity to serve them as their mayor. If I can be of any assistance during this transition, please let me know. Sincerely, Richard L. Waterman.
Now, you wanna copy that? If you can print everybody off, print the whole gallery, one, two, and one.
Just needed to...
I'm sealed.
We'll make a motion to accept the mayor's resignation.
So it says no later than sixty days from now, so you're saying definitely within sixty days, and any time prior to that, that we get someone that will step forward with the cons- with the consent of the board.
The board has to vote on it. The board has to vote on it.
Patrick, I understand that, I just, I just wanna be sure what you're doing, this takes me a little by surprise, Richard.
Well, I'm kinda tired of being backstabbing. I don't do nothing there. Yeah, but I don't pull some in here, but that's okay.
Okay, I don't see... Got a motion on the floor?
Oh.
The board has to approve that?
No. No, you turned it into the board. It's, it's notarized, so, yeah, it's... And you, and you are officially making a recommendation, so that your seat is... By Brian Davis?
Yep, he's the most impartial person in this room.
And how does Brian Davis feel about that, Brian Davis trustee? How do you feel about that?
How long is the position?
Just until the next election, which is April. And May, you need to turn it over some of that.
That's for the board who takes your seat.
I understand that, but do you, do you have to be fussy right now?
No, I'm just saying, he doesn't point.
Rich knows that, too, he knows that.
I didn't point.
He said he made a recommendation. But Brian takes it during the interim until the next election, right? Is that, am I understanding correctly?
Yeah.
And you've had a conversation about this?
Yeah.
And you're accepting of that responsibility?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have. All new to me tonight, sorry.
Now, I don't know if the board wants to vote on a replacement tonight.
I don't have a little time to digest. Leo?
I just see you hold up on any action until...
That's...
And that's what we... I'll, I'll be able to make that for you, you know.
I should, you may have built a table set.
And you made your recommendation, so that's like, I don't know, I'd like to talk to Brian a little myself, I mean... I'm not, you know, I don't know, I, I, I don't have my thoughts put together yet, but...
Well, let's just move on to the other two.
Okay, let's move on.
Well, are you still the mayor of that, or what?
Ten, ten would have to go after two days. Up to sixty days.
Now, like, you have a point you wanna replace him with.
What is the statement?
The resignation is no good.
Oh, absolutely, it is, it says, it's a...
It's dated up to sixty days to find, to...
Sixty days for other board to find a replacement. He's made a recommendation of Brian, and I think we should all have an opportunity to talk with Brian a little bit, let her read it. Get together Saturday morning, have a cup of coffee, or I don't wanna hang around here the rest of the night, and I have some, I have some thoughts to go. Take care of the checkbook for the last few weeks, that's what overwhelms me. Um, okay, so we're moving on to number ten, which I don't understand, because it says the minutes from November seventh of twenty fourteen, which will be tomorrow. Uh, yeah, that should have said November sixth. Why, what do we even have up in the minutes, why is it on? Well, that was if we appointed a treasurer or appointed a trustee and needed to do anything special. Okay. That was a just in case.
But since you're already on the signer card.
Anybody can be on the signer card, you can have your own sign.
No, I mean, since you're already on it, then we don't have to approve this to get you on it.
Right, right, we've already, we already done that, gotcha. So now are we going back to number two?
Two is...
Is that where we're going? Yes, we're ahead, okay. With everything that's about to boil over right now, um, I guess I'll throw another chink in the works. I am willing to continue to be the interim keeper of the books for the next thirty days. I'm not prepared at this moment to accept the appointment of treasurer and to relinquish my seat as a trustee. I got, I got a little, I got a little bit more to think about on that. And I, I don't honestly feel that, just straightening this checkbook out and moving forward, that was a little bit more comp- and, and devising spreadsheet and all the things that Sean and I have been doing, that she's been helping me do and getting this together, has been a little, given me some other thoughts down the road. And I'm not sure that, uh, this is what I wanna do. I'm also not sure that if I relinquish my seat as a trustee... We're leaving a lot of stuff vacant here. Mm-hmm. Um, if the board is willing to allow me to just go ahead and do this as a volunteer, this strictly as a volunteer, at least for the next thirty days till we get a grip on all these other shakeups, I'm willing to do that, and then, and just continue my role as a trustee, but also take care of the books. I'm already on as a signer.
I would be, yeah, you guys...
Everything's pretty, everything's been caught to date, the books look good, um... I guess I'll say we did kind of, we left the, we didn't write any checks for a few weeks to give time for all the old checks to come through, and then, um, Jackie and the bank president said the best thing to do, they felt, was to draw that line in the sand right there with whatever that number was, and start your balance from that number, and that's what I've done, and it's worked out perfectly. The only other option would be to do a deferencing audit, hire, hire an accountant, a team of accountants, and go back through the books five years and start over, and we're talking ten thousand bucks to do that. By letting the checks that were out clear and letting a few weeks go by, it brought us right back to the balance to where it, where we thought it always was anyway, and we basically drew a line in the sand and started that balance and moved forward. All the bills are caught up, um, everything is paid. I got Mediacom to waive all those late fees, with all that mess we've had on Mediacom all these months, they waived the late fees, and they're paid, and they're up to date, and we don't owe them anything now, and they assure me from this point forward, our bill will be eighty-seven dollars sixty, except I think it is. Everybody that needs paid, it takes me paid tonight. I do have a few checks that I need approval to pay, so if everybody is okay with that, I'd like to throw out the amounts of these checks and tell you what needs paid, and I welcome anybody's comments, as long as we're gonna be peaceful about this.
Uh, it's on a different subject, Shuri, but, uh, before the meeting closed, I wanted to bring up that, uh, Hoover's usually comes to get the, the old mower. Has anybody heard anything about them wanting that?
That's not just a spring.
Yeah, they're gonna get it in spring.
Oh, they're gonna get it in spring?
Yeah.
Uh, and another thing that I wanted to mention that, uh, uh, I'm not talking for myself, but, uh, Dave here has put in a lot of time on the mower this year.
Yeah.
And, uh, he, he kinda was led to believe that they'd be like a little egg at the end of the year. But, uh...
Back to a couple years ago, I'd probably get a big egg then.
That's what, that's what he was led to believe.
Yep.
Yep. Oh, gotta turn there, but that's up to board.
I, I supposedly put that on ne- next month's agenda.
On the bills to be paid, is there a, a sheet for that, someone?
I've got, I've got it right here. Some just got handed to you just now. I've got, um, we agreed to, did we not agree to the amount of seventy-five dollars for Halloween candy, was that where we were at? And I, I've got a bill from Sam's Club for thirty-six twenty-nine cents, I assume that was from you. And then I've got a handwritten piece of paper that says dumb dumb candy forty dollars to Jody Nun.
Yep. And that was that box for right there. Anybody here grab a handful and take them off?
Then that, then that's only my first question, number one. Was this approved by?
Yeah, that was the seventy-five dollars.
As far as this, do we have a receipt?
No, it was lost.
We had it right up.
If you want one, I can send to Ohio to get one, probably. Try to get one.
Nope. We found a director in the factory, we got factory price. So you need to reimburse me forty dollars to me, right? They told me a handwritten receipt, all of them.
How many years?
There was a tax exception, so, but, just in the correlation.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wanna make sure everybody knows... Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure everybody knows what's happening, who, everybody's on board with the play. All right, I got a couple more. Vaughn Plumbing, I have a bill from Vaughn Plumbing for nearly a hundred dollars, can somebody tell me what that is about?
Geez, we ain't paid that yet.
Phil Vaughn Plumbing, sixty-five dollars for toilet repair.
For what, toilet repair?
Sixty-five dollars for toilet repairs to Phil Vaughn.
Yes.
Has that been approved?
Yes.
It was approved?
Yes.
I didn't know anything about it. Who approved it? I didn't know our toilet...
When the toilets were running nonstop?
Oh, I missed a couple meetings, I was getting refreshed, we... This is dated September twelve.
And that would have been about July or August. Right in there. So, that's when you come and said what was wrong with the toilets was, and I told you to tell her to quit putting the bleach stuff in the back of the tanks. Because it sits, here it sits too long, and it eats all the rubbers out of the seals. So...
I thought I had told you about it there a couple months ago. It was just running nonstop.
Right.
Yeah, it's like the hand and...
So, what do they do for sixty-five dollars? What did they do?
They rebuild them, I don't know.
Put a new plunger out.
Put them in the bucket. Both are one more.
Both toilets, right? Okay, so is it the board's pleasure that we pay Vaughn Plumbing sixty-five dollars?
You include that with the, what else we got? 'Cause I'll make a motion for all of them, rather than each one of them.
Flowers, flowers for Patty Collins, who serves thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Um, other than that, we need to decide, the IML, we're gonna make it one payment or two payments, so I'll get it...
Well, I think we can wait till next month, Danny, I...
Okay.
Until the nineteenth, Greg.
That's fine, sure.
Joe, did you look at that?
Well, I read on it, said to pay the first installment by December nineteenth and the second by the fifteenth. There were certain options underneath there, but they were all, there was one due by the twenty-first, and we'd save eighty-eight dollars.
Yeah, we're not gonna do that anymore, so...
But if, if we do option two, we save eighty-eight dollars. No, that's... Okay, so it's...
Just pay it all.
If we pay it in full, it's not due till the nineteenth of December. If we do with any other option, we need to pay them by the twenty-first of November.
Right.
We're gonna pay it in one payment, correct, boy?
Yeah.
Well, we've done it in two payments in the past, so...
I'm reading a different station than you are, then, 'cause mine's saying you have to pay it by December or by November twenty-first.
Yes, if you go with the different options.
Yeah, there's, there's two other options.
Look at the next page.
There's a half a percent installment fee, about thirty bucks if we delay till the nineteenth of December.
Actually, look at option number one. If we pay option number one by November twenty-first, we only have to pay fifty-seven ninety-five seventy-four instead of fifty-eight eighty-four. They do give you eighty-eight dollar and twenty-six cents.
And then the second option, you save sixty.
Right. But you're only trying to... With the thirty bucks, though.
Right.
Okay.
And we wait till next...
Twenty-nine dollars.
We've always paid it in two installments in the past, so...
Why?
I don't know.
Don't we pay that in one installment in the past?
I thought last year we did have to pay it one installment to save a hundred bucks. Doesn't it exist to pay it in two installments, we've got the money in the accounts? Okay. I'm sorry. I make a motion that the unamused league risk management payment gets paid immediately for option number one, five thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-four cents.
And I'll put all of them, put them in this?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And I'll have all these out tomorrow.
You want to drop with your motion? That we pay the high V to fill along, what else can you add? Other than...
Halloween candy. Halloween candy, flowers for Vaughn, that's it. And then what? Do you have a schedule?
Work for me. Let somebody else's side suffer.
Let somebody suffer.
That we pay all the bills.
Pay the bills, the current bill due.
All right, so you want to have a checklist? So, I guess you're just gonna do it all in favor. Hi.
Hi.
All right, the motion's carried. Do you want this checked tonight? It'd be nice, since you're living in town.
Then we're leaving down there Saturday.
If you live in town, yeah, then I'll get you about a quarter.
Everybody watch out.
Get you about a quarterly tank of gas, man.
Yes.
I'll write you a check right now, have Richard sign it.
I just thought I was gonna get out of here. Oh, yeah, COVID coming, anybody?
Joey, is it me I would do it, or like, why?
Second.
Second. When do you start mowing grass and spring?
When it starts growing?
Yeah.
Whenever you get back.
When the water goes down.